Item 10B, adopt a resolution authorizing a city contribution not to exceed $800,000 for construction of the San Bruno Grade Separation Archway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This is an issue that you've heard about before, that's been in front of the council on a number of different previous occasions. And we're here tonight with what we hope will be the final discussion of leading to the final completion of the arch, which, as you know, is the signature decorative feature to be added to the now nearly finally completed grade separation and train station structure that is operating well and has provided itself an aesthetic amenity to the community. The archway to be installed on the east side of the grade separation structure is intended to provide a distinctive and special gateway identification, both to announce the grade separation and the train station itself, but more importantly, to announce arrival in the heart of our community, in the downtown, in our transit corridor area. Specifically, the previous discussion that's been had by the City Council over a period of approximately almost two years now relates to the design and the cost of this signature decorative feature. And very specifically, I think that the City Council will recall that in November of 2012, the City Council provided initial approval of a design for the archway feature that included an internally illuminated and Plexiglas clad archway that would have a green color and would, as I said, be internally illuminated. After a number of months of developing that design, and preciseing that design, and preciseing the cost, the City Council approved a resolution that signaled its intent to cover 50 percent of the cost, then estimated at $1.2 million, for the construction of that archway structure. Those costs are to be shared equally with the Caltrain Joint Powers Board, who is the lead agency with respect to the construction of the grade separation structure itself. Subsequently, over a period of design refinement and initial construction cost calculation and coordination with Granite Construction Company, the grade separation contractor, the JPB staff determined and returned to the City Council with information identifying that costs as precise for the construction of the arch would unfortunately increase to approximately $1.4 million, again, to be shared 50 percent with the Caltrain JPB. At that point, the City Council asked for an opportunity to review, in person if you will, what this thing would look like and how the cladding and the illumination would be constructed so that you could satisfy yourselves that this was a construction that would produce the intended result, as I indicated, a signature gateway design element to make this community proud not only of the grade separation structure, but of the gateway to the downtown. Upon review in late fall of 2013 of the mock-up of that structure, a very small sample, if you will, of what that structure would look like, the City Council engaged further discussion about a revision to the design in order to satisfy specific concerns about the integrity, the durability, and the appearance of the arch structure as it was previously envisioned. Those changes were incorporated, and there have been numerous additional conversations between staff and with Subcommittee of the City Council to refine and precise what that alternative design will look like and how, in particular, to create an appearance that has a sleek and finished profile that, again, will meet the council and the community's expectations. So tonight, we are, I will say unfortunately, here to advise you and to seek your concurrence with the final cost estimate for that structure in the manner that has evolved and that your staff believes most accurately represents your and the community's expectations. And I don't know whether I have a document that I believe you don't have yet, is that correct? I'd like to ask Bruce if you could distribute this to the City Council. And I'll apologize in advance, ordinarily I would not deliver this level of detail to you on the DAS. We will walk through with you the high points of the cost comparisons that lead us to the action that we're requesting you take tonight. And specifically, I'm going to ask our contract project manager to give you that briefing. Rafael Bolan from the JPB is in the audience and is available to answer any questions. And at this point, again, staff is requesting your final concurrence to the increased cost that is now captured at a total of $1.6 million that represents the design concept that I've just identified and that I would further like to confirm with the City Council as to the appearance of the finish. So we'll first go through the cost, and then I'll ask you to take a look at the material boards that we received that represent the finished appearance of the exterior of the arch construction. Again, there's a resolution, it's been prepared, it's part of the packet that asks for your concurrence at a cost to the city not to exceed $800,000, which represents 50 percent of the cost that is now anticipated and precise for the construction of the arch. And with that, I'll ask Bruce to give us a very high-level assessment of those differences and, in particular, why did the -- to answer your obvious question or the question that I anticipate as to why did the cost increase from $1.4 million, which was the last you heard, to $1.6 million?
Thanks, Connie. Good evening, Mayor, Council members. Back in December of 2013, when we had the meetings to decide to delete the internal illumination and go to a solid cladding system around the arch, JPB was commissioned with the idea to come up with a solution that would be a solid version and to keep the cost at the same amount that it was at the $1.4. They'd come up with -- the design had external steel cladding that had a lot of expanded joints that would be filled. It also had bolts that would be piecing the parts of the arch together. So there would be a lot of visual obstructions when you were coming into looking at the arch. You'd see a lot of vertical joints and horizontal, and then there'd be a series of bolts that were holding the different sections together. So after meeting with the Subcommittee and then getting back with Caltrain to try and come up with a sleeker, more refined design, they came up with a whole -- they changed the cladding where they would have internal clips holding the different sections of the panels together and reduced the joint between the different sections because it is in a series of sections. So they would be able to put one side on and then the other side clip it together internally and go through the arch, and you would see a very -- a much nicer line. And that seemed to be the direction that the council had given to Caltrain. Due to the fact of now internal bolting and clipping versus putting a lot of external bolts for view, that was a longer lead item, and it just -- the cost went up because we were trying to hide any of the support systems. And there are a small amount of the increase in cost. It's in the structural steel and the cladding was the duration of getting the shop drawings in and going out to procure the material and be able to build it and then bring it onsite. And wanted to make one note, JP Caltrain, for their part to try and control costs, they were able to reduce their support costs, and they cut that in half to try to absorb some of the additional costs in the cladding and the structural steel portion. And I think that's kind of the gist of where the large increase occurred for the arch.
So I would just simply add, the material that you have in front of you, and again, I apologize for the level of detail that we've delivered to you at this time. Our intent really solely was to show that there has been a thoughtful evaluation and a very vigorous effort on the part, both of staff as well as the JPB, to control costs. And you can see that where certain elements of the previous design, the internal illumination, for example, were deleted as part of the new design, in fact, those costs have been deleted. And as Bruce mentioned just now, there has been an effort on the part of the JPB, and it's granted a relatively small cost in the grinder scheme of things, but not an insignificant amount of money that is attributable to the staff support and project management support that's being provided by Caltrain is not being charged to the project as the discussion about the project has continued and the work effort associated with its design development and now hopefully moving to construction, those costs continue to be absorbed by Caltrain. Again, not a huge amount of money in the grander scheme of things, but I think evidence that there is, there has been a level of effort and concern that has been devoted to two topics. First is moving this project to a design that provides consensus of the City Council at the quality of appearance that the council and the community expect. And secondly, at controlling and containing costs in every possible manner. So with that, staff, our project manager, and Mr. Bolan are available to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions of staff? Michael?
To the Chair, thank you. On this handout that we got, it shows the structural steel costs, $1.1 million expenditure, says based on actual cost. So can we assume from this that that's already been spent and that part of it is done?
So I believe that the -- you can tell me if I say it wrong, but I believe that the extra costs are associated with the previous expectation that the work could be done concurrent with the grade separation construction project itself, and as has been represented to the City Council on previous occasions, that is no longer -- that is no longer possible. So you have costs of structural steel increasing as well as the time, the costs associated with the time and the need to produce the project as a separate contract change order to be delivered separately from the overall grade separation project.
My question is actually about the green coloring of that block and the legend indicating that it's based on actual cost.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's based on the contractor's cost proposal.
For the change order.
For the change order. What has been procured already is the internal support mechanism that's been fabricated. It's going to be similar to the other alternative. They're able to use what has already been done, what's the changes, the way the cladding is manufactured and installed.
So if the shading of that block were to actually represent what's actually been expended, what percentage of that block would be lavender versus green?
Was it $45,000?
That's correct. So I can --
At the microphone.
So the color coding was intended to sort of show increased certainty as the number got more real. So the green is sort of -- it's both. There's approximately $45,000 in steel that's actually physically been bought and paid for that we already bent in the city, sitting ready to go. That's a sunk cost. We've already paid that $45,000. So the rest of it is a projected. The only reason I colored it green is because that's off an actual request for change from Granite Construction. So if no further negotiations took place, that's the number Granite would do that work for. So that's why I'm calling it green versus some of the earlier numbers where they were actually my estimated numbers, so obviously it's not the same level of certainty.
Perfect. Yeah, that's what I was trying to -- thank you.
Rico? Irene, anything?
I'm actually torn, and I have been. And I appreciate getting this information. However, I think we know, I'm one who needs to have it, have a visual, have time to analyze it, ask questions on it. The cost has increased, and I think you've articulated as to why, and I appreciate that. I know folks have been very excited with the completion, with the change, with the safety, with the traffic congestion that's been lessened. And so bluntly, I'm up here wrestling with the continued increased costs and whether or not it really is needed at this point. And I know I was one who supported it at one point. So anyway, to be blunt with you, that's what I'm wrestling with.
To the Chair. When I spoke with the city manager earlier, I had one question about the funding. On our side, it's a general fund expenditure on the Caltrain or JPB side. Are those funds pretty much already allocated for this project? Okay. And if we were to not proceed with this, that money would?
Disappear and go to a fund. Some other improvement.
Another improvement somewhere else.
Just for the purpose of the viewing audience, the answer was those funds are available and programmed for this project through the JPB, they're 50 percent, and that were they not expended for this project, for this archway, they would be reprogrammed to something else, presumably not in San Bruno, because there is no more that needs to be done with the grade separation structure itself, or that is substantially complete at this point.
Okay. When the arch is done, assuming we all agree, or the majority of us anyway, who owns the arch?
So you guys would own the arch. So we haven't formalized that agreement because we haven't got to the funding portion yet, but yes, the intent was the city of San Bruno would own the arch.
Okay. And where are we with the rest of the amenities on the grade separation? Where's the line drawn between what San Bruno owns and what Caltrain owns?
Right. So if you recall, it would have been 2011, you signed an overall C and M agreement, construction and maintenance agreement, that laid out exactly the responsibilities for who maintains what and who owns what. Upon -- of course, that made perfect sense in 2011. It looks like we will have to clarify a few other points more specifically because the devil is in the details on these things. But in general, that agreement is the framework that allocates who's going to maintain what. The short version of it is the grade sap and everything on it is being maintained by JPB, and then generally speaking, everything on the -- excuse me a second.
You need to sit down for a little while, that's fine.
No, I apologize. Generally speaking, the stuff that's in the city right of way or on the ground is being maintained by the city. There are exceptions to what I just said.
Okay. So what about the fountain?
The fountain is being maintained by the city.
By the city?
Correct.
Okay. And so that formal arrangement will be forthcoming?
As to handoff?
Yeah.
Yes. So to further complicate the matter, our contract with Granite Construction allocates certain periods where the contractor is responsible. So for instance, in the case of the fountain, there's a 30-day period that the contractor had to do the maintenance, at which point it would be handed over to the city. So we're working with staff on that exact handover right now because it's not as clean as just saying on July 30th, everything goes to the city. Obviously, there's -- if the contractor is maintaining, and I'm assuming that we would allow them to do that at their cost.
They're still maintaining the fountain?
The fountain is one of those items where they are not. So the fountain has reached its 30 days, so that's one of those where they are ready to hand off to the city at this time.
Okay. The city is anticipating also putting some artwork on that grade separation. I think you're aware of that, right?
Yes.
All right. And where does that fit in the mix here? In other words, can we just put it up or what?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Can we just put it up or what?
So if I could interject here, we've been working closely and cooperatively with the JPB, with Rafael and other staff via our contract project manager and our community services staff to precise where the best location for the mural project is and how that will be installed. In a conversation earlier today with Rafael, he very properly and graciously indicated that there is a desire, I think everybody wishes for the same thing, which is for the appearance of the walls and the various, shall we say, blank areas of the grade separation structure to be improved. And so the JPB is more than willing and is working very cooperatively with us to make sure that we find the best location. Now, it is our intent, and was our conversation with the City Council previously, that it would be installed on city property within the confines of the Posey Park, the relocated Posey Park area, and we're still working with that concept.
We looked at the location just to the south of where the sign is on the stairs going up by the ramp, going on the upper tier, and then possibly having some more on the lower portion where the water feature is, that would be in front of where the benches are. So if you were to be sitting there, you'd look at the tile work, the fountain, and then to your upper left would be the other feature.
Good. I would expect that some pretty serious coordination with the artist is going to happen with this too. And the reason I bring this up is, you know, I know you're going to work this all out, but we've talked before about working a lot of things out with the JPB, and there's an awful lot of surprises, a lot of devils in details. And so I just want to make sure we don't have any more going forward. You know, we stood here a number of months ago, and we're assured that this was not going to cost any more money. I understand there's been some changes made, but when we go from $1.2 to $1.4, okay, let's get it going. And now we got an extra, in essence, $200,000 or $100,000 each to kick in. So I just want to make sure that, you know, this doesn't keep going on and on. I know I wish Ken was here because the two of us have been working on this for many, many years.
Right.
And I think it's going to look spectacular. And it's what the group that was put together to work on this grade separation really wants. So I just want to make sure there's no more hiccups along the line because they're very expensive.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Okay.
To your point, Mr. Mayor, obviously, the arch, if approved, would become property of the cities.
Correct.
So to staff, to staff, do we know what type of cost? Maintenance, and we obviously had gotten a cost of the fountain, I believe it's about $12,000, if my memory is correct, in addition to the other landscaping, but $12,000 for the fountain, so we had that quantified. Is there, whether it'll be 10 years from now or is it ongoing maintenance? Do we know, have any idea?
Let me chime in on that. I think the part of that was discussed and probably has been in the last number of months regarding the cladding that's going to go on this archway now. We talked about a green type of coating, which in fact, over a period of time, has to be painted or repainted. And, you know, my feeling, and I know Councilmember Iberes, is the aluminum cladding to stand alone the way it is with a light texture to it, so we don't have to worry about real maintenance down the road. It'll do what it's going to do, and I think it'll weather even as much as aluminum patinas. But we've thought about some of those things, but it's going to be a lot less maintenance-free than what we had talked about before, whether it be a plastic Plexiglas or whether it be the girder type look, which has to be maintained quite a bit, so.
And if you do choose the brushed aluminum, there is a small cost savings for not using the paint.
Right, exactly.
And you reduce your overall future maintenance because the finish is already there.
Right, exactly.
So staff is currently recommending the brushed aluminum appearance that Councilmember O'Connell is holding and displaying right now. There was previous discussion, and it is possible, you can see the painted chips, there's three different ones in different shades of green, that are all, that paint is applied on the material that will actually be used for the cladding so that you get an actual, you see the color as it will actually appear if it were painted on. What the arch fabricator indicated to the Subcommittee at a meeting a month and a half or about ago was that the lifespan of the painted treatment was approximately 20 years and that presumably at that point, this arch would need to be repainted, which could represent a fairly significant cost. Otherwise, to answer your question, to elaborate on what the mayor said, is that we are not aware of any ongoing maintenance type treatment that will be required and any costs associated with maintaining the brushed aluminum appearance.
Rafael, given the go-ahead tonight, when can we see the arch in place?
It would take us about 30 days to get shop drawings and then to start reviewing those. So we would begin procuring material in approximately six weeks. They're going to want to fit it up in the shop first before we bring it onsite and figure out it doesn't fit. So realistically, we would be looking at, the earliest we could be assembling anything out in the field would be three to four months from the day you decided to give me the go-ahead.
Okay. Any other questions?
To the Chair, just some comments. I know this concept predates my tenure on the council, and it's something the community is definitely behind, and I think there are some people out there that worked really hard on this that are expecting the arch. But I still feel that it's a very expensive and not completely necessary addition to the grade separation. I was probing about how much has been spent to date because, I mean, clearly, if this had gone a lot faster, I would have felt more compelled to stay committed to it had we sunk in more money than what we had we sunk in more money than what we have. Looks like we're about the 12% mark right now, so I don't think we're past the point of no return on that. You indicated 45,000 for the steel and we have 166,000 invested in the base, so that puts us around 200K.
That's correct, but in addition, the design costs are almost completely expended. So the bottom, almost the third from the bottom column.
So you're saying that the 287,000?
No, I think we're at about 500,000.
Correct.
Costs sunk to date.
Correct.
Total.
Total cost.
Including soft costs, correct.
Which we split, 250, 250?
Yeah, I've, you know, tried really hard to get behind this and I think the current design that's been proposed is far, far more attractive than the original one. But I still don't see us really needing the arch at this point, so. You got, I gotta say, you've done a great job and like I said, the design has really come a long way, but I still can't see fit to get behind it, but thank you.
Okay, any more questions or action by the council? They're looking for a resolution?
So I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
No.
Vice Mayor Medina.
No.
Mayor Buane.
So the motion does not pass with a two-to-two vote. If it's the council's pleasure, we would be happy to bring this item back when there are five council members so that it could be considered by the full of the city council.
I believe that's a good idea.
Through the chair, and I would agree. I do want to echo what Councilmember Salazar said. Mayor Buane and Councilmember Iberes, who's not here, have done an extraordinary job and a lot of effort and a lot of passion. That was one thing that almost had me with an eye because I respect and value all the effort and work they've done. And I do think it is a better arch than we first saw or certainly we saw the mock-up. So I do want to commend and compliment that and all the work that you and Ken have done.
All right, thank you.